I'm standing outside of the town hall where a meeting of the villagers has just ended and they've decided the next big building project. After I built this building, they all of a sudden became a very democratic and orderly people and they they decide I no longer have a say in what gets built out here and that they they themselves decide what gets built and uh so I had to stand outside during this town meeting because I was not a member of the big nose club so I could not attend but they did come with a decision and we will talk with the testificates who brought this together let me switch my view back around where are you? There you are excuse me, sir it's you up here, hey, how you doing? why don't you tell my people what you've decided to put in?
Oh well yeah, I decided that we needed a baseball field because this town
Oh okay
Yes, yes, over there, yes Yes, this town needs a sport We work hard all day, we have no time to play You see, yes, over there
You want it out there and you want it?
Yes, you were out there playing in the lake earlier
Small bit of funding this time, okay?
Small little part
Alright, thank you, sir
And then you can build it up
Since I've done so much they said to hire me on again to build baseball field What's going on here? Baseball field out here, they had me fill in a bit of lake here, there used to be this extended all the way and the grass is almost grown back but they want me to build baseball field I'm kind of excited and they said they want it to start out as just a little sandlot dirt field so I'll get my armor back on I need to head actually back to my house to grab stuff for bases actually I could use use pressure plates need one more? I use pressure plates for bases actually if I have some iron, I can make home base, since home base always looks different, home plate actually looks different than the rest I'll actually turn that into an iron pressure plate so okay, the testificates want me to build baseball field I'm gonna need some iron um, I've already collected a lot of brick I have some clay here, iron I wool hardened clay, ew, do I not have any iron? I should have iron actually I really should no, no ew I might have to run thought I had iron I might have to run oh, no, take that I might have to run, that'll be we'll work on that later not my phone stop it, I'm busy let's see that clay, I didn't throw that clay, yeah, let's see hmm okay, well, actually we'll work on the infield I guess for today and then I'll get the iron iron going, okay I don't have iron out here, I demolished the house that was here and I'll see what the villagers want me to do with the library if that'll be part of the library or not, but I just cleared the building because it was it was up for demolition okay but yeah, they're in charge, I put that town hall in and they just, they took over like they run this place now they had me they had me clean this area up and so yeah for now we'll just use this as a base, let's see we'll start that there and then it'll be, I guess 10 blocks? yeah, they're 90 feet and right where baseball, we'll just we'll say 10, let me check my phone real quick oh, okay 1, 2, 3, 4 6, 7, 8, 9, 10? 2, 3, 4, 5 I should just be able to go out here? and boom here's our diamond now I will fill it in, let's let's dig out where's the sand, well, the infield, the dirt for the infield will be actually sand somewhere here take all this out I might hit water because I know I covered some water we'll make the infield dirt out of sand pitchers mound will be made out of sand and can't believe they wanted they wanted a baseball field, I guess they wanted sports to be their tourist attraction, that was really the the point of the meeting, they wanted to know what they're what they brought to the table as a town they still haven't decided what what the name their town, but or what their name of their team will be, but I think they're just looking to get a a little bit of a league going and then then just go from there I guess, I don't, I don't understand them I'm all excited for them to learn this sport, I love this sport I thought it was getting dark out no, it's about to so we will, let's see I don't have dirt to fill that in, do I? no I should might do something like that ew, well, we'll dig it out and I'll have more dirt, okay so let's see okay, dig out these baselines baselines will be white, they always are or I could use redstone now, don't I might on occasion, I've been doing this lately get this world and the figgy craft world mixed up only because um like, the items I have okay, I'm gonna have to make trying to think now I gotta fill this layer a layer down this will be probably one of my first epic builds, oh shoot, I need to bring a bed over here these testificates don't have beds in their houses oh, whoa, whoa, wait, where are you going, where's the fire dude? I should have I can't believe I don't have any iron, I thought I had all sorts of iron out here so yeah, playing on 1.6 finally game's updated, got the new browser like I said, I'm back from my camping trip taking that bed with me actually it's okay, and if I don't spawn here, I know exactly where I'm going to spawn, so I can get back here pretty fast if I die, but I highly doubt I'm gonna die baseball diamond it'll look cool because it'll be just out of town I will put up more houses for these guys in a bit but today, they want me they want to get started on their team so oh good job okay okay oh, pitcher's mound should be, right? what do I make this? I want to be able to make a mound this here will be the center no, that's not it I messed something up here, hold on boom, mound actually I could make it sandstone, use a little sandstone slab make a crafting bench down here yeah, they just wanted to start with a small little sandlot and if it grew, they would make it something bigger like a stadium or whatever oh whoa, no I don't already so that's the pitching pitcher's mound this this is foul line this tree isn't play, get out of here we're not building a Minute Maid park here ah, let's see maybe I'll go let me think we got it, yeah that's the foul line ew, I don't know what to use for the fence torches, I have plenty of them oh, too far now I have too much dirt again put it towards roads okay now we got our basic dimensions figured did I turn all that sand into sandstone? this is hard because I'm working in a diagonal go back to the infield to go here two blocks all the way around or, yeah, two blocks all the way around ow, hole oh I may need that gracias let's go okay out of here oh, we're not a sand I might have to go into the desert, I have a spot in the desert where I get all my sand and you can tell because there's like nothing left of it, it was a giant dune that I just took over ah, baseball fields, okay I can do this, I can do this check that guy out so this is starting to take shape you guys can't notice oh jesus oh yeah, that is to keep things from spawning is it time for a bed already? ah, okay, this is starting to take shape I might need to run to the bed again, I know I have more wool we'll work on the lines and that, okay now the fence actually I need to, let's trap, is this one of those big mothers? Ah, it is these guys you have to get on the top of them or else you miss a log and then you you're like, what the hell? where does, let's see how this looks actually it doesn't look, it looks alright if I can get those wall dimensions I might mess with, that center field's real short center field, for those of you who aren't baseball fans, and by the end of this build, I think a lot of you will have a better concept of the game if you don't already, is this one of those big mothers, is this just one of those ones? no, this is one of them right, guys I think he got connected to another one okay sleep yeah, I'm gonna mess with these these wall dimensions daytime, thank you oh, hole let me dig out more dirt, I'm gonna end up with a lot more dirt and anticipated for now, it looks like they just want what I'm gonna call a little big field or a yeah, just a, no stadium yet but they did say that is that's let's pick up all these torches, I messed up, I went too far on an angle come on, give me the torches rotten flesh, don't fail me now, come on okay, let's try again, boom torches let's eat some bread and think about this just getting our basic dimensions down oh, what is this? okay oops I think that'll work a lot better they have a little niche back here actually now, let's move this niche outwards what's that? I might have to make it out bring the material I want to make that out of, okay I'll go back, get some sheep's wool for the baselines actually I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make the brick and I'll just lay down the first row of brick because we're gonna have a brick wall nah yeah, they're still asking where the baseball is where's my baseball? that's what they want, they just want some baseball boom, boom they just want some baseball okay I should end up with like, yeah, one extra because of because of the pots, I mean now that might not be enough getting clay making bricks is just a pain in the butt I kinda want the brick wall and I forgot the wool heading back excuse me, pardon me working on it huh, alright baseball let's go, come on, come on, what we got? wool, that, 40, oh, isn't enough I might have to head back to home base pick up more supplies, I definitely came into this, came into this less prepared than I thought I was and there's sheep all over the place here I just need iron but let's work on the wall first, baselines I've already dug in, I don't why did I? okay I might have to use now obviously we'll put put brick along the back here to make it look like it's connected, I kinda, I think that'll that'll work I'll just need a lot more brick baselines shouldn't be too hard the reason I grabbed the gold is if we're gonna use gold for the oops oh oops make sure I put that base back before I before I forget nope, I thought you were supposed to be playing chalking up the line I don't have any more wool no actually I need all this sand I am like ADHD guy right now with what I'm doing need to focus on one part of this and leave it be okay, no, no, baseline, focus jesus today, baseline baseline and wall next episode, something different baselines, just laying the foundations today oh, already have it in my hotbar is that right? Yep not gonna have enough just short I'm only gonna have like two bricks, blocks of gold so I will have to one, god damn it, one block of gold we'll put it over here where the line's already finished oh maybe gold isn't the right gold may not be right just yet brick wall is definitely actually we'll save the brick wall for upgrades this place will need upgrades starting simple, I'm jumping the gun a little too early we're gonna start with a basic field fix it up because we still, we still aren't even close to a basic field so we're gonna make the fence first out of wood wooden fence get it drawn out how I like it I really think I'll enjoy this yeah let's go before this night comes then let's craft oh, I have sticks what was I using sticks for? who knows? eight should be plenty Come on. Foul pole. Or actually, it's a fair pole. I call it a fair pole. If you don't like it. Oh, well. Because it is a fair pole. Because think about it, okay, the, the pole does indicate fair or foul. I understand that. But. When it gets hit. When it is hit. The ball is fair. One, two, three. No, that's all. Okay. When the ball gets hit, it is. A fair ball. So that's why I call it the fair pole. Most people call it a foul pole. But yeah, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it right here for now. I'll do a little bit. Filling in the infield dirt. So it's gonna take a bit. And then I'll fix, I'll finish the, the wall. Yeah, thanks. This is all kosher here. Oh, this isn't. I may put in some other things, but for now, this is. I'll finish clearing out the sand, make it look like a baseball field. Then we'll move on to the next part, but. So until next time, guys, hope you've enjoyed. And as always. Keep on gaming.